Okay, so today is February 1st, 2024, and it is 4:02 PM, and I'm calling the meeting to order. We are going to start off with public comment. However, I do see quite a few folks on there, so we'll keep that limit to two minutes for public comment. And we'll go from there. So does anybody have public comment? Oh, I see. Is that Russ or Joyce?
It is Russ.
Go ahead, Russ.
Abby, I just want to observe that I think you're abusing the open meeting law. Under the open meeting law, you can have certain sessions where contracts are being negotiated. You have labor relations mediation grievances other than taxes. And you're using this attorney-client communications as a broad sweep. In reality, I don't see anything on the agenda tonight that would require attorney-client communications. And I think that you've used this in the past to hide behind the screen of what's actually going on between the board members. And I would like to have you consider not having as many executive sessions because it's leaving many in the public wondering what the hell is going on. And I just think that it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Joyce, I see your hand up as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a comment with regard to the articles for the school. I don't really understand or see any reason why the annual town meeting is interrupted before lunch to address the school district voting. Voters don't have a say in the order that articles are listed in the town meeting, in the warning rather, for the town meeting. So if I wanted to be there to vote on Article 9 or Article 15 or any specific article, I'd need to be there when it's brought up. I think that because the town and the school are two separate entities. If the annual school district meeting is going to be held on town meeting day, it should be held at the conclusion of town meeting rather than an interruption in the course of town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Joyce. Anybody else with a public comment?
Yes, David Cherry has. Hold on.
Go ahead, David.
Looking at today's agenda, Bullet 3 under Warning Articles, it asks that the voters authorize the school board to investigate changing school districts. The it also authorizes, let me get my face on there. There we go, I'm sorry. It also, it then goes on to say, following a review, that they can take action depending on that review. It sort of opens up a it authorizes the school board to go ahead and move to a different district if I'm reading it correctly. Based on whether this article is passed. And based on the fact that we, and it's also July 1st, that's only three months away. It just seems to me that it's giving the board authority to review and take action in a short period of time. Based on the fact that this has been the way that the board has taken action to hire people and the, you know, what I consider adverse outcomes of hiring individuals that didn't meet our standards. And the fact that potentially is leading the town into four different suits. I think it would be prudent to research this and then have a meeting to decide whether there should be action. Underneath the bullet that I'm talking about, there's a sentence that says to transact any other business that may legally become before this meeting. I'm not sure what that actually means. What type of action are we anticipating? It doesn't really have an article there or anything. I'm not sure what that bullet means. Those are my comments at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Cherry. When we get to the new business, when we're discussing the articles, all of that information can be discussed. So you may find some answers. Okay? Thank you. And is there any other further public comment? Not seeing any other hands. Okay, hearing none. Oh, who's that?
Emily.
Emily, did you have a public comment? You're unmuted, Emily. Oh, now you're muted. Looks like there may be some more people that are joining. Well, Emily, I'm not sure if there was something that you had for public comment. We're going to keep moving along. I'm not seeing anybody else's hand raised at this time. So we'll move along to changes to the agenda and Emily, oh, Frank, I see Frank with your hand up. Go ahead. Is that Frank C. Wright?
Yeah, Frank, can you put your last name somewhere?
Okay, Frank, you're muted.
How's that? Let me try. Yes. It's Frank C. Wright, S.E.A.W.R.I.E.H.T. Can you hear, did you hear me, Dan?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Yep. Appreciate it.
That is quite simple. I actually chiming in to say that I agree with what Russ said about probably overusing the excuse to go into executive session. And I don't expect you to stop doing it. But I do would like for you to just consider that if you're trying to attract people to move here to bring children that were down at their school, just consider that it might appear to be a very exclusionary tactic and is used just to exclude people from participating. And I think it would overhaul any law or it's discourage anyone from thinking they could come here and be, have their children go to this school and they could participate in how the school is operated or not. As it is now, I don't mean this any more insulting than it will be. But this is wrong about is autocratic as Joseph Stalin would. So that concludes my third comment.
Thank you, Frank. Emily?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
I just have a comment that I feel like, you know, we give public comment and it's if it's really not received. It feels like you're just blasting through as fast as you can, you know, to hear what people say, but you're not really even listening, Abby. So just very unhappy with the way that you're running things.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Is there anything else?
No, that's it. Just wanted to know that it feels like people aren't even heard in this town. And anyone that has just anything to say, it seems like you're just blasting onto the next person with a quick little thank you and off we go. And you're just doing what you want anyway, and you're really not listening to the townspeople.
So public comment is not question and answer time. It's for people to come and make a public comment. And hopefully, if they do have questions or answers that are questions, their answers can be reached when we get to the discussion forces of portions of what are on the agenda. So, you know, if you're not feeling heard, I don't know what to say to that. But, you know, everyone does get their chance for public comment. And sometimes there's so many people that are on the meeting, we do have to restrain the time or restrict the time, which is like the case today. So it's not necessarily that it's a it's not to not allow people to talk. It's that we have very important business to take care of on the agenda. And public comment is important, but we also need to weigh in what is on the agenda. So any other public comment?
No, that is all.
My wife Nancy would like to say something. This is Frank.
Is this? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
My name is Frank, but my wife is sitting here beside me and she would like to make a public comment.
Okay. And who is this?
Abby, I'm Nancy Tips.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Nancy.
And first of all, I wanted to say that I appreciate that the job that you and Rory and Dan are doing is a very difficult one. And I do appreciate that. But I also feel that the things that are in law need to be observed. And one of them is that the minutes are supposed to be put up within five days. And the most recent minute that I can find is from December the 22nd.
Okay. Did you have more to your comment, Nancy? I'm not sure if I can still hear you.
No, you heard me. All I said was I'm concerned about the fact that, you know, well, in general, I guess I'm concerned about the sort of autocratic quality of the dominion of the school board at this point. Because I do feel as though things are being done in such a way that it makes it difficult, perhaps not intentionally. Because I can't know what your intentions are. But the result is that many people are feeling as though it's the school is sort of being run with an us and them kind of quality to it. And the them of which I am part are being excluded. And the minutes are just one aspect of that.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Okay, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to changes to the agenda. I would like to move the executive session to prior to new vis, to old business. It is slated for about 15 minutes. So that is one change I would like to make. But I also want to respect the time of Lori and Bob and folks here for old business and new business. These are very important subjects that we need to address. And then possibly a correspondence at the very end. What are people's thoughts on that, Rory and Daniel?
Abby?
Hold on, Russ. I'm trying to clear from Daniel and Rory about what I had just asked.
Abby, can you just repeat that?
Yeah, can you repeat that?
You want to?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the changes to the agenda, to move correspondence to the end of the agenda and to have executive session moved to the beginning of the agenda, it is slated for 15 minutes. But then we can get into old business and new business and really make most of the time for that. What are your thoughts on that, Daniel and Rory?
I support it. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't. I don't see any issue.
Okay. Russ, did you have another question?
Yeah, you need, when you're going to go into executive session, you need to state the reason going into executive session. And you need to invite whoever's going to be in the executive session to go in with you. So I see that Mark is on the line here, and you need to say that you're inviting him into the executive session when it happens. And you need to outline the item you're going to discuss, not the details, but this, this the outline of it to comply with open meeting law.
Okay, so on that note, I make a motion finding that premature general public knowledge regarding confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body would put the board at substantial disadvantage of disgust in public. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion for the board and Mark Ottinger to enter executive session under 1 VSA 313 1FE. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, excellent. So it is 1717 or 517, the board is out of executive session and back in open session.
All right.
Daniel?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion. Coming out of executive session, I move to include a notice of the school closure petition in the town annual meeting and put the matter for, put the matter for a popular vote with the public. Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Did we have any discussion?
Uh, yeah, there's, I think that's Russ's hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Russ.
We need to know the results of executive session. I noticed that Mark Ottinger was on the executive session. Are, is the school board considering hiring Mark in a representation for the lawsuit from Jenna Kramer?
I am unaware of a lawsuit from Jenna Kramer.
Yeah, what are you talking about, Russ?
There is a lawsuit by Jenna Kramer that's listed for tomorrow.
That's her termination hearing. That's, that's that's been kicked down quite a few times, but that's, that's her termination hearing that she had passed.
So what, what, what exact item did Mr. Ottinger as an attorney provide you with counsel on? Because it's unclear from what's on the agenda as to why you would have had an attorney on the agenda.
So we are dealing with, can you hear me? Is my phone unmuted? Okay. So there are multiple legal situations that the, the school, the school, the district is dealing with. So being able to get informed and have time with Mr. Ottinger to answer questions from behalf of the board is, was important to include, you know, understanding the, you know, petition that was sent, understanding how things are going to move forward. Upstairs, please.
And that kind of discussion could have been done in a public format so we could have participated.
So, well, we, we are making a motion, we just made a motion, Russ, that we're discussing to include that in the thing. So I'm not sure how that's a bad situation if you're interested in having that vote, that that is what the board is approving to have in the meeting.
Yeah, I would assume you're, you'd be happy about that, Russ.
I'm just kind of confused.
Yeah, and you thought that, you thought Jenna was suing? Yeah, it seems like there's a bit of confusion.
So let's move on. Is there Crystal, can, I see your hand is up.
I think what Russ is asking is, is this attorney going to represent you in the other legal actions against the school? Like the school choice case? Will he be the attorney moving forward?
So at this point, there's still ongoing discussion. But it is very likely, yes, that Mr. Ottinger will be the attorney going forward. So what, and I, what?
I think that, I think that Russ is wondering how getting a separate attorney impacts the taxpayers.
So that I am not sure as far as how things go because there is also Vizbit. So there's also coverage with Vizbit. But what we are discussing right now, and I hear, I hear what you guys are saying. However, we're trying to focus on getting these motions out of executive session, which will help you understand what, you know, what the goal is of the board moving forward and how we want to best support kind of what, what the electorate is desiring here. So Daniel had a motion that he just made. Is there anyone else that has some discussion regarding that motion to allow that vote at town meeting? Okay, so I've seconded it already. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Can Dan repeat the motion before it goes to a vote?
Sure, but it's already been seconded and all in favor. This, yeah.
Abby was calling for discussion on a motion that was on the floor. It had not been voted, so I just want to hear the motion again.
It has been voted. Abby seconded and all in favor occurred. That happened literally a couple of minutes ago.
So how, how does that clarify? Abby said that once the motion was made, it would clarify the conversation, the discussion that's going on. If we can't even get the motion repeated, how is it going to clarify?
I'd be happy to repeat it. I'm just making sure you understand that it's already been voted. We're just doing the post discussion. I can repeat right now if that, if that's easy, Joyce. I move to include a notice of the school closure petition in the town annual meeting and put the matter for a popular vote with the public. Once again, we already had a second and all in favor.
And hopefully, we can see this in the minutes within five business days of today.
I'm doing the minutes right now. So, yeah, I would assume so.
Okay, so that motion's passed. I motion the voters to vote to authorize the school board to petition the state board to regroup Wyndham Town, Wyndham School District into a different supervisory union. Can I get a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Frank has his hand up, but I don't know if it was from before. But now I don't see him.
Go ahead, Frank, if your hand is up.
I don't see him anymore.
No, it is.
Oh, there he is. Frank?
Yeah. I want to speak. All right, can you hear me?
Uh huh, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know whether the thing was turned on. It's Nancy Tips. It's not Frank.
Hi, Nancy.
I, first of all, I couldn't understand when you came out of executive session and Dan made a motion. I couldn't understand what he said because, because he was saying it very low. So that's one thing that left me perplexed as to what went on. The second thing that I have to take exception to is I believe that your response to Russ was incredibly patronizing, which was, well, why do you care about discussion, Russ? Because we agreed with you and you ought to be happy. Which sounds like exactly what you would say to a naughty child. And I find that incredibly disgusting, actually. And the fact is, we would have liked to have participated in the conversation. And we don't understand why it needed to take place in executive session. And I think that's a perfectly rational position to hold.
I think I can speak a little bit about why it was held in the executive session. As probably many of you know, the vote for a school closure has been brought up in the past. It's been voted on. It's been overturned. And those lawsuits are still
I'd like to interrupt you. That wasn't overturned before. That is still in litigation.
That's great. And that's, that's, okay.
But you're misrepresenting what happened.
Nancy, did you hear the motion again? Was it clear the second time? I just want to make sure.
She has left the room in disgust, so go ahead.
Okay. The superintendent would like to speak. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I just want to make sure that we have, because these motions that you're making are going to be captured on articles, correct? Are you guys capturing the exact wording? Because I don't know about the first ones. My internet cut out a little bit. But I, but the second one, it sounds like the, the leaving the SU article, your motion did not match what was on the agenda. So I just want to make sure that you have captured that wording so that we can share it with the town for the town report tomorrow, if that's, if it does get approved.
You have it written down? Yes. So that would be the wording to use for the articles.
The motion that you made would, is the, so I just want to make sure we're clear. My belief is that whatever wording the motion is, is the wording that goes on the article. Maybe someone can correct me. But what I heard you say was, shall the voters authorize the school board to regroup, to ask to regroup to another SU? And not the rest of that paragraph. Is that accurate?
So the voters vote to authorize the school board to petition the state board to regroup Wyndham District into a different supervisory union.
All right. And then, sorry for the clarification. And then the first one, I also had trouble hearing that. Did you, did you move that the same way that that's worded on the agenda or did you move that in a different way?
Is that is that worded in the agenda?
Well, the motion, the petition wording came from a community member. You have it in your packet and it's very specific wording. I didn't know if you were wording it the same way that they had suggested or whether you had different wording. Because that, again, is essential to have on the, on the articles correctly. Based, I mean, it goes on the article based on what you motioned and voted on, not necessarily what they're, what they're proposing. So I want to make sure we have captured correctly to give it to the town. And this is all due to them by tomorrow. So it's really pretty timely to get this.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I, I did not reference the exact wording of, of the petition, but, you know, if
was
I guess should I, or?
Well, if your intent is to adopt the wording that was suggested to you by the petitioner, then I think you can just say that's what you were looking to do. If you had different wording you were choosing to do, I think you had specified that wording.
Yeah, there is no tomfoolery to my wording. Yeah.
Yeah, or
it's supposed to be above board, you know, straight to petition.
So your, your, what you moved, voted on and approved is the exact wording from the petition is what I'm hearing you say.
I, I mean, I don't know if it's the exact wording. I didn't reference it. But it, you know, it follows the spirit and, yeah, the article should reflect, yeah, probably the wording.
Yeah, that's what we, that was our discussion. Is that wording.
So if that wasn't what your motion was, but that was the intent, I think you guys will need to figure out and make sure that that's that your intent matches what your motion was. So the community gets the clarity around that particular wording.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I can take a look at the petition and reword it based on petition or, or we can just draft the article based on that. I don't know, but but was the board's sense of this?
So we got quite a few hands up. And I know David Cherry, Michael Pelton and Lori Garland have their hands up. So I'm not sure if any of them are able to help with any guidance, but go ahead, David.
I had the, the same concerns as the, and it, and this is what I was talking about earlier in the meeting. The wording be stated exactly before you take your vote. Because being concise and exact has, and not being concise and exact has consequences. And it can be confusing. And if you're going to ask a town to pass a motion, it has to be clearly stated what that is. Not the same flavor or whatnot. And I think if you've got people who have taken the time to sign a petition to put in a motion that they want action on, you either need to state it exactly or you need to modify it concisely. And the motion that I had talked about, Bullet Number, the one before the last, shall the voters authorize the school board to look elsewhere in terms of school district? The one before the last Shelley, uh voters authorize the school board to look elsewhere in terms of school district. By specifically asked and uh pending the uh. Formulation and review of a need and whatnot. You just dropped that completely. Does that mean that you want to take action? Uh to change school districts without looking into the benefits and risks at all? Um or does did you omit that by mistake? I think um to try to change somebody's school district uh that impacts the lives of children. Uh you have to have reasons and you have to have a benefit to do such a thing. So I would encourage you. To include language uh that would, if you're gonna pass this motion, include that that the part that you have. Uh uh removed, which was exactly pending the formation and review of a need. Assessment to evaluate the benefits and challenges of switching from WCSU to BRSU. And determine the best course uh for the action of the district. Uh you might include the best course for the action of the children involved that are being taught as well. Um so. I I personally think this motion, I'm gonna stop very close.
You, David, I I appreciate your input. Um you bring up some valid points, okay, so.
Real fast. I I wouldn't mind addressing Bob real fast on uh the wording of the motion.
I was just gonna move to adopt that we use the the wording as written.
Yeah.
Take a second?
So, okay, so hold on just for clarification, which?
Okay.
In in the article, that is written as it was in the petition.
Okay. You have not poured on that one yet?
So the motion that I made, right, uh the exact wording is included notice of the school closure uh petition, so. So that would include the exact wording. I'm not going to say, I I didn't say the entire wording, but I said the school closure petition, so.
You referenced that wording, that motion already passed, therefore the wording in the. Petition is the understanding of the board is that that's the wording you want on the article.
Correct, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then the other one around the language, the way the way I have it right now is shall the voters authorize the school board? To petition the state border bed to regroup Wyndham School District into another SU. That's the current motion you have on the table right now.
And if uh we would like to amend that motion um to include um the. Uh pending the formulation and review of a needs assessment. Um in that motion, so that it's it is definitely um just to assure you, uh Dr. Cherry. Um not to be a decision made and we were not um to be specific even on BRSU. I think that it's gonna be um. More uh robust to be able to look at every option available and that's information we will get from that survey, so I agree, sir, that that should be added. Um so I would say the motion would be uh to the voters uh to move the voters to vote. To authorize the school board to petition the state board to regroup Wyndham School District. Into a different supervisory union pending the formulation and review of a needs assessment.
You should put in there that clearly benefits the students.
Well, that that would be the point of the whole whole survey is like to make sure that it's benefiting the students, cuz that's the the needs assessment. So what are the thoughts on that change? Do I get a second for that motion to have that be the change for that motion? And then we'll have discussion.
Uh second.
Thank you. Discussion. So the wording being changed um from what was out of executive session for that. Um to have be amended to um. Pending the formu- formulation and review of a needs assessment. And any discussion on that? Okay, uh Michael Pelton?
Just for clarity, um regardless of whether that's included or not, it's part of the process. There's a specific pathway that the. District needs to follow in order to petition the board. Um I think it's a good idea to include it, but um in order to petition the board of ed. The school board has to go through a process of reach out and assessment to look at the. How it might affect the budget, for instance, how it might affect the students and the town as a whole, as well as how it might affect. Um any supervisory unions that would be affected by the pay change. Um so it's important to reflect that regardless of whether the wording is there, it is part of the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Well, Crystal Corvieu?
Um I'm just gonna point blank say. I'm absolutely disgusted with this. There's no way you guys have checked with other SUs. To see if they'd be interested in taking you. Nobody's gonna take this district. This district is a litigation nightmare. And honestly, with the way that Bob Tebow and that SU has been treated. I hope when everybody else turns you guys down, that the WCSU decides. They no longer want you as well. Um I gave up my board seat. Because I'm involved in litigation and it's not fair to Bob Tebow to be involved in litigation. And have a board member who sits on a other board. I love being on that board. But unlike other board members, I realize I have a conflict of interest. And I'm gonna point blank say, I have two kids in towns in school. They both have 504s and I do plan on pursuing something along the federal guidelines. To make sure that this school district no longer disrupts my family.
Thank you, Crystal. Um Frank? Miss your hands up?
We're not, we're not being right. Um I I wonder if you could help me understand what the point of it is. What the what is the point of moving to another supervisory union?
So the point is that there would be a needs. Assessment done to figure out what path forward. Um if any, that's appropriate. What is the path forward? And this is part of that path is. Is there, is there a difference? Is there uh you know, wh- what is it that would benefit or hinder? A change like that. So by doing the assessment, which is what the article is requesting from the voters, is permission for the board. To be able to petition the board of ed to do the assessment.
Right, Abby, but answer my question. My question is, why did this even come up in the first place? Help me to understand what your thinking was to even suggest in the first place. That there should be a move to another superv- supervisory union. At this point, because we have been completely shut out from any of your discussions. None of us has any way of understanding what you were thinking. Why did it even come up as an idea?
So there has been, there have been multiple people who have uh communicated interest in in different S uh supervisory unions. Um so that has, that has just been something that has has been mentioned. Nancy, I'm speaking, please. Nancy, I have the floor, please. Thank you. While the board is planning and moving forward, we are exploring every option. To ensure the success of the students of Wyndham. So this is just part of that process. Thank you.
Imagined moving to another supervisory union. Why did you select that one? There has to have been some. Rationale in your mind that you're not sharing with us and we'd like to know what it is.
So the motion on that is on the floor that we're discussing is not even specifying a supervisory union. It is just specifying the need for the 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 desire for the board to be able to conduct the assessment. And make the request and petition the board of ed to do so. So that is, that is all that it is. It's not that we are definitively making any choice to move anywhere. But that we are requesting permission from the voters to explore every option because of the situation we are in. Where we are essentially getting to start, you know, from scratch with all new staff. Um we have a brand new board. Um so all of these things are are changing and. And we're trying to just make sure we are hearing from all of the community. We are hearing from the families. We're hearing from the students. This is stuff that we need to make sure is is factored in to any of the decisions on how the school progresses. So that is why that wording was specifically changed not to include any um particular supervisory union because. It's the that was just the closest one um that I was thinking of with Floodbrook. Um so it wasn't even pertaining to. Um that being a definitive supervisory union. That was just. Looking at a different direction that would maybe remove the, you know, Wyndham Hill challenge that seems to. Um be really frustrating for some folks. So um but I would like to move on. Uh so thank you, Nancy, uh for your. Uh comment. Um Emily, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, Emily, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm wondering, um why wasn't um the option of choice um discussed, which is something that we all. Um had an interest in or quite a few of us did. Um instead of the possibility of changing districts, um why aren't we instead talking about choice? Um which is what the parents would like.
So the article or the motion that Daniel made coming out is including that article. So um.
Okay, great.
Okay, great, okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize that that was included.
Big shift stuff, right? Like this is not, nothing set in stone. We wanna hear from the voters. We wanna know and be able to hear what. And and find out what is the best for our community and what is gonna work best. And all of this plays into it. We've we've gotta figure out what the plan is gonna be and how we're gonna move forward. And this, these are just particular articles. We've come out of executive session. I really wanna value Lori's time um. And get to uh getting the budget and stuff done. So with that in respect, like can people just um keep that in mind, okay? Uh is there anything else, Emily, that we could answer for you? Or did you have anything else specific to this discussion?
Nope, nothing else.
Thank you.
Did did anyone else not hear the motion? Cuz I'd be happy to repeat it again if if helpful. I did not realize the first time I was uh too low of a voice or I didn't enunciate.
So Emily, Michael Pelton and uh Russ, you all have your hands up. I don't know if they're up from previously or if they're up again. So um I will go with uh Russ and then Michael Pelton.
Thank you, Abby. It's actually Joyce this time.
Oh, sorry, Joyce.
It's okay. Um I am wondering, I mean, I heard you say it was not any specific supervisory. Union, but um according to the agenda, it does specifically state joining Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union. So I think that in and of itself is misleading in terms of the conversation to even have that on the agenda. If you didn't have a specific supervisory union in mind. Um so number one, that's misleading. Secondly, um. I don't understand and I would like an explanation on why the petition. That was presented a year ago to close the school is now being taken up. When up until now, everyone has been told it did not need to be accepted. And lastly, um I am amazed that um you have. I I get it that you wanna explore and, you know, explore all the options. Uh to ensure success for students, but um you have, as it stands now. Um an article about accepting the school budget at five hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred twelve dollars. You'll have a motion about closing the school. You'll have a motion about providing for the education of the students by paying tuition. And you'll have a motion about um adjusting supervisory unions. So four separate motions regarding the path forward. I think a lot of voters are going to be confused. It's just. Uh there is no clear direction for the board or the town. And you're offering up all of these options at town meeting that actually, I mean, most of them conflict with one another. If someone approves the the budget, how do you then approve closing the school? I mean, if someone approves moving into a difference, if if the town as a whole approves. Any one of these, if they approve them all by an equal vote, what happens then? I mean, too many options on the table. It's confusing.
Thank you, Joyce.
Um I'm I'm sorry, I didn't get an answer to my question about why the board is taking up the petition to close the school now. When it was presented almost a year ago.
Are you talking, so you're talking about a previous board in this case, right? And I I can't get into the minds of a previous board.
Well, you clearly um voted on the issue, so. Um you had to have some understanding of the previous issue. There was a petition presented um to close the school and it was ignored and there was no response given. For a long time and in the meantime, the board prior to your service, Dan, and your service, Rory. The board shopped around for legal opinions that supported their position. Um so that they could find grounds to turn down the petition. So the petition was not brought forward when it was presented. Because Abigail shopped for a legal opinion that agreed with her own position. So now it's being brought forward and I'm just curious why. So maybe you're not in a position, Dan, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that Rory is probably not in a petition being new to the board. So maybe I should direct my question to Abigail. Why now?
Nice response, Abigail.
Abby, you're muted.
Yeah. I don't know if Abby is having uh technical issues here. Well, I think in the interest of time, um you know, we can circle back to that, uh Joyce, and I have it noted in the minutes. Um. Uh. I guess i- in this case, uh if the chair cannot call on people, vice chair Rory, do you wanna call on Michael?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was muted.
I did, I said it maybe you have bad connection.
Oh, yeah, nope. I was just ro- going away there. So Joyce, I was trying to answer your question and I apologize. Um so the reasoning behind the petition that was received back in July of last year, there were various reasons as to why that petition was rejected. Um there were uh numerous errors in just the 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 petition had a lot of flaws. Um to to just to start. Um this petition also being in accordance with town meeting. Um and having been a a discussion clearly that that voters are passionate about.
Um, we are in a position, right? We've, we've had to temporarily, um, you know, close the school. This is something that we need to hear from the voters as a board. So I understand your concerns with the multiple articles. Um, however, it is exactly that. This board is looking for the guidance from the electorate as far as what is it they want to see? How is this gonna, how is this gonna, um, work for our, our community moving forward? Does that mean we have a different supervisory union? Does that mean the school becomes non-operational? Does that mean? And all of that at town meeting, as much as it's contradictory, uh, I highly doubt you're going to have pass a budget, but also pass a school closure. Um, clearly the people who are voting to pass, uh, you know, one or the other is not going to change their vote. That would be very odd. Um, so these are all varying degrees of exploration for this board that is passionate about making positive change for the students of Wyndham. So thank you for that. Um, I'm going to move on to, uh, Michael Pelton, and then I think we're going to have to call the question here because this is, uh, we have not even gotten into the agenda and that's really the point of this. So, um, Michael Pelton, are you there?
Yep. Um, I just wanted to discuss briefly the question regarding the shift to potentially a different SU. Um, regardless of whether this school becomes up non-operational or stays operational, an exploration into, uh, a different supervisory unit to ensure that their school is supported the most appropriately is, I think, worthy conversation to have and worthy, uh, subject to explore. If people will remember, um, when our town was founded, we were part of Lunandary. Um, which would have put us in the BRSU. In nineteen sixty-three or thereabouts, actually before nineteen, slightly before nineteen sixty-three, we were actually part of the Chester Andover, uh, district. Um, and then I think in nineteen sixty-three, we changed to the Wyndham Central, uh, Supervisory Union. So there's been a couple of different shifts as history has moved along and how things have progressed. And I think it's important for schools to think about what best suits their students as time goes on. And I think given all of the changes that we as a town have, um, gone through and, um, all of the potential future changes that we will go through, I think it's important for us to think about which supervisory best supports our school, whether we're operational or not. Um, there can be significant financial, uh, differences between supervisory unions. The way the administration functions are different in each supervisory union. And, um, the choices where our students may go to school also can change. For instance, if we are part of another supervisory union, we may in fact open up our students to, um, our high school students to school choice versus being locked into, um, Leon and Gray Seminary. So there, there are options out there that I think would be beneficial for the district to explore with the need survey. And I think it would be silly for us not to explore them at this point in time, given all that's going, been going on. Thanks.
I thought Michael wanted to be brief. I will be. You keep calling the petition and we submitted the school closure petition. It is not that. It is to tuition kids to another school. School closure is up to the school board. So you're misleading what the intent of the petition is. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, uh, calling the question. Um, so the wording out of the executive session for the motion, which is also going to reflect in the article, uh, has been amended. It's been seconded. We've had discussion. All those in favor, uh, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on. Um, so we are now going into, uh, old business. And, uh, the fourth ba- uh, draft of the budget. Lori, are you, uh, please, please still be with us here, Lori.
I'm still here.
Oh, God bless you. All right. Thank you, Lori.
Um, can I go ahead and share my screen?
Yes, please ma'am.
All right. So Bob, you'll have to give me some permissions. Thank you. All right. See here. So you should be seeing the budget, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Okay. So we had a great discussion last, uh, board meeting, last special meeting, and, uh, there were some changes made to the, uh, budget, uh, put forth by the board. And, um, those changes were to increase, um, the, uh, counseling services, um, to, uh, thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I have that wrong highlighted there. Is this one we need to highlight? Um, and so that was an additional twenty thousand dollars, uh, which puts the position at, uh, basically a point three seven. Um, is how it works out. If you're looking at an average salary, um, salaried employee, uh, salary and benefits. So, um, you know, that it definitely increases the time, um, in a week, in a week. Um, I'm not sure at this point in time if there is a shared resource. Um, but as, as time goes on and contracts come out and personnel changes, that could, uh, be a possibility of sharing, um, a person, an employee, instead of it being a contracted service. So right now it's put in the budget as a contracted service. It doesn't necessarily have to be that when the time comes. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, Lori.
Okay, great, Lori. All right. So then, um, the other change that, um, was added, um, is you can see right here in co-curricular. Um, we added a summer program. I'm sorry, an after-school program. So that would include an after-school site coordinator. We, we base the program, um, on, uh, basically what Wardsboro does for an after-school program. They have a very successful program. Um, so that, that employs a site coordinator that would be there three days a week to, um, coordinate programs. And, you know, and then, then they also line up program leaders, um, as we talked about last time, they, it can be a multitude of programs. Um, I know, uh, Dan, you had thrown out robotics. That could be a program after school. Um, and so this is a good place to start. Uh, we did put in some supplies. Uh, it's not quite the full twenty thousand dollars because I had to balance because we were staying within the bottom line, um, if you recall. So, um, that's basically what has been added to the budget. And then where we took the money from, because, uh, we wanted to stay at the five ninety-four, um, is we took the money from the transfer. So there's still money being transferred for, um, into the capital reserve. So, so you've accomplished all of that movement within the budget. Um, we did talk about, um, the staffing and how that could look differently. Uh, the money is there. Um, and so it could, you know, you could, depending on what the pool is like when you go to hire, um, and this is, you know, assuming the budget passes and all of that, and you can start posting. Um, then we can talk about what that looks like, but the money is in the budget. Uh, it should be in line with either having a point two principal or something like that and two full-time teachers. Um, it all depends on who you hire, what benefits they take, all of that. So, um, so that is the budget itself. Um, so now we'll just kind of walk through how it looks for the taxes. Tax rate, right? So you're used to seeing this from me before, um, we're going to look at twenty-five here. You can see that spending's up twenty-six percent. Um, offsetting revenues are down. That's a lot of the small schools grant was lost in that. Which you pick up here in the weights. So you can see the weights were up. The yield, we don't know what that will do. The legislators are looking very closely at this right now. Um, I suspect there will be a major change coming to the legis- to Act one twenty-seven, the legi- legislation that is in play right now. Um, you will be above ten percent. There really is no way around that. Um, I mean, to, we talked about this before, but to, to get underneath that ten percent trigger, you would need to cut all the things that you added, but you would even need to cut more than that really. Um, so I think you just prepare for a review. Um, okay, so this is where it gets a little interesting. So, you know, we have the cost per pupil. We know you're going to get the review above the ten percent. And then we work into the tax rate and what that looks like. So the tax rate without a cap, um, is up thirty-five percent, fifty cents on the base, um, tax rate. So a dollar ninety-two, almost a dollar ninety-three. The cap is capped at a dollar, um, forty-nine. So this is where I want to caution everybody because it's, again, we won't know until the end of the season, what is going to happen. But right now the legislators are talking about getting rid of the cap if your student count went up. So, um, and there, there could be some nuances to that, but basically I think that they'll take away the cap if your student count um, increased over the previous year. So I mean, I, this is, you know, want to be able to give you uh, basically worst case scenario. I did increase this. The CLA did not come out, um, at ninety-five. I mean, yeah, it did not come out at ninety-five percent. Um, I think talking with the listers, it will go into effect before, um, I'm not sure if it will go into effect before your town meeting vote, but it should go into effect before tax rates are set. So I use that number. I don't, I have no idea what that number will actually be, but, um, when the CLAs came out, it was like sixty-five percent. So we do know it'll be higher than that. So the tax rate after the CLA, um, is two dollars and three cents. So just a little bit over what you paid last year. If the cap goes away, if the cap is in play, then you're going to be forty-four cents lower. So you can see what kind of, you know, um, cause and effect this, the cap has on your tax rate going forward. Um, this is the best I can give you right now with the knowledge that I have. Um, the legislators are asking for a lot of information from us right now. Um, to be able to make a decision on this. And the reason that they're contemplating taking away the cap is because education spending, um, of which, you know, you're up fifty-one percent, right? That's, that's a huge increase. And in the, the twelve, um, December first letter from the commissioner, it was estimated at twelve percent. And now they're estimating it at seventeen percent. Um, Wyndham is way above that, but you, you actually have a little budget. So it's, you know, how it affects the big pool of money isn't as much as some of the larger districts. So that's where we are with what the tax rate could look like. Um, at this point right now, it's really, um, I hate to say anybody's guess, but those are the two scenarios there where it could, you could be capped or not be capped. Um, and does anybody have any questions for me? The board? This is the budget. We can talk through anything from here.
Thank you for coming back and, and making the adjustments. I know it's a lot to add, especially with such a short window. So.
Yeah.
We appreciate your work.
It was good, good conversation. So I think, uh, the board was agreement to add these things. It's great.
Oh, thank you again, Lori. Uh, we really appreciate you. And I'm trying to scroll through now and see if I see hands. Uh, uh, whoops, it goes too far. Uh, Michael Pelton, do you have your hand up?
I do. Um, I was wondering, assuming that Russ is still on, uh, I was wondering if Russ might have some insight regarding what he believes the, uh, projected CLA might look like and if we might be able to see the budget with that projected number. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Michael. Uh, Russ, are you still on the meeting?
Yeah, I'm here.
Is that any, uh, anything that you could share with us to, uh, make this question?
We, we have no clue where the CLA is going to land. We know that generally speaking, assessed values are going to go up between forty-five and fifty percent. And as far as the CLA goes, it's up in the air. We have no idea. What we do know is we're all going to be paying a lot more in taxes, particularly education taxes.
Uh, thank you, Russ. Did, uh, that get you started, Michael?
That's not necessarily true with the five percent, uh, rate, but thank you, Russ. Is there anyone else?
Uh, I think, uh, Dan, un- unfortunately, I don't think you're in a position to truly understand the way the taxes work. Um, everyone's going to pay much more in taxes because the assessed value of their property is going to go up significantly. Even though the tax rate is going to go down, when you get through the mathematics, you're going to pay a hell of a lot more in education taxes. There's no way you can fund of, uh, almost a six hundred thousand dollar budget and spend less money out of your pocket in property taxes. It's going to, your actions are going to go up, period.
I, I appreciate that comment of your pocket because typically what? Three-fourths of the populace is going to pay not the tax rate. It's going to have some amount of adjustment. Uh, I imagine for you it's true, right?
Well, you have to focus on the amount of money that you're spending on the school. It's not just the tax rate. You gotta look at the amount of money you're spending. And if you're going to spend almost six hundred thousand up from four hundred and seventy, everybody's taxes are going to go up one way or another. Don't, don't think that you're going to get a break simply because the tax rate's lower. The assessment's going to be higher.
Yeah. And, and once again, right, there's, there's tax credits that apply, right, to, you know, uh, over seventy-five percent typically of any populace. Now that might be true for you, but for me, right, the, the take home will be less and that includes, you know, three out of four people in this call.
Uh, Dan, I'm sorry, it's Joyce, but, um, I am actually offended by the comment you made about for you, you're not affected for me, you know, this, that, the other thing, like we're in some kind of a caste society where we're in, you know, one position, you're in another. We do qualify for a bit of a tax break for your information, but Russ's point was it is going to go up for everyone. So even if you do get a bit of an adjustment as we do, you just live down the road from us. So you're not, you know, breathing different air. Um, the, the, the point is tax rates, even for those who qualify under income sensitivity, those are the people who are most affected by an increase. And even those people will see an increase. So I think that's the point maybe he was trying to make. Thank you.
It's the entire cost of the budget. If you think you can fund six hundred thousand dollars worth of the budget and have your own personal taxes go down, you got a hole in your head. It's not going to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, Joyce and Russ. Um, I, going forward, uh, when one is called on, um, please, uh, be patient for the other one. It's not a, a double. Um, you're both in the same room, get to answer questions. So I want to make that clear for everybody. Um, and please wait to be called on by the chair before speaking, so we can make this as orally as possible. Um, Crystal, I see that your hand is raised. Uh, please go ahead, Crystal Corvino.
So I'm sitting here and my husband's in the room and my husband never weighs in on anything. And the fact that Dan Roth just said seventy-five percent of our taxpayers won't be impacted. Well, myself and my husband will be impacted. So it's just lovely to hear this board sit there and So it's just lovely to hear this board sit there and say, well, we don't care about you twenty-five percent that are going to be impacted. Because the twenty-five percent that are going to be impacted, that's exactly what they heard by that statement.
So we are going to move forward uh, talking about the budget. Um, I want to make clear, no one is, that I believe uh trying to insinuate anything different other than there may be um variations with individuals in the um community that have different circumstances. So I think paying attention to, to how the uh, getting presented, but we are looking at, I would like us to stay focused on the task at hand, which is getting through this project. And hope that we can do in, in kindness. And you, you've uh given the, the uh explanation of what's been going through. Is there anything additionally you would like to share with us, please?
Uh, are you talking to me, Abby or?
Yes.
Oh, no, I think that um the, the next step for the board um is to approve um the expenses because that's what you are approving. Um, that's what goes on the ballot is the voters vote a total expense number. They do not vote a line item budget. They vote uh for the total. So that would be the next steps as far as I can see, unless there's other questions about the budget.
Um, so we have not heard yet from Bridget Corby, so we'll take Bridget Corby and then the board can move forward. Go ahead, Bridget.
Uh, thank you. So this might be a question more for the board. Um, assuming you go forward with what Lori's presenting and that's what's on the ballot. And we're presenting uh this budget plus also, excuse me, I'm getting over another cold, um, and also presenting this petition to tuition students out. Will the board provide any information to the town of what that cost would look like? Just so we have something to compare it to when making those decisions.
Absolutely. Um, I, I think that that's very reasonable. So, uh, with that being said, um, do we need to motion to approve this number, Lori? Is that what you would like to have?
Yes, but I guess I need a little clarity on what you just um asked for. Um, are you asking for a another um sample of a budget that has tuitioning in it at this point? Because this has to go to the town tomorrow, town auditor. So this is the budget that will be in the town report. So I just wanna make sure that we're clear that this is not a tuition budget and this is the one that will go to the town auditors tomorrow morning. And if I don't send it to them, I'm gonna be in big trouble.
That's my understanding, Lori, that this is assuming that we are operating.
Okay, so I would, um, I would like to um, continue to address uh and answer public for, for a discussion. Um, but I also think that we are really taking a lot of time and I wanna try to, to have people be heard, but also continue to move along. So, um, there's a few hands up that are in the uh uh, that are raised currently. Um, but I think if everyone can try to keep their questions uh within a minute uh or their comments or how that that's gonna go. And uh, again, uh, continue with kindness. So we're gonna start. Uh, Crystal has her hand up. Uh, we have uh, Michael Pelton and Russ coming, and it looks like Bob Tebow also has his hand up. So, um, we will start with Crystal. I think your hand was up first.
I just forgot to put it down.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bob, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify. So Lori is asking about what is it that the board's requesting from her after this is so that what it sounds like is you're gonna attempt to move ahead with this particular expenditure budget. But there's been a question um about what a number would look like for information purposes for the town meeting. And it sounds like that's a different, that's more of like a, a, a number that might appear on an information sheet that the board could produce um perhaps at the time of the, of the town meeting. So it sounded, it sounds, from hearing what you, what you said yes to, it sounds like what the question was, could you provide a bottom line number and maybe the tax implications for what would, what would it look like if that article passed to tuition? Is that what, and, and that's not to be adopted, but to just have as information for the town meeting? Is that my understanding that correctly? Cause I wanna make sure Lori has her instructions and a timeline for when to provide that.
Right, and if I could just follow up on that, Bob, thank you. Um, the, the budget that the board puts forward and is warned, that is the number. That is not going to change regardless of what informational in, information is going out at that point at the town meeting. So I just want everybody to be clear that in a town meeting, the budget could be changed on the floor, right? That, that is happened before. But this is the number that will be put forth on the warning. So I just, I wanna make sure we're all clear about that.
Okay, sorry, I was.
Thanks, Lori.
You, Lori. Um, so again, we still have hand raised. Um, I see uh Michael Pelton and then we'll figure out if it's Ru- uh Russ or Joyce that'll be next. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I was just gonna sort of echo what Bob and Lori were just talking about. Um, I think it's important you don't make things too muddy. Uh, if the school is intending to remain open, then produce an operational budget. And uh, if that passes and for some uh reason that the school went to a non-operational format, then the budget would then therefore be adjusted. And there would be a surplus in the budget that could be applied for the following year. So I, I don't think it's really too problematic if the school board is presenting a operational budget to the taxpayers. I don't know if it's uh appropriate to give Lori a whole bunch of last minute stuff to be presented in the town report. It becomes too muddy and too problematic for her timeline. Thanks.
Okay, Russ, go ahead.
Sorry, Abby, I'm keeping you on your toes. It's Joyce's time.
Sorry, go ahead, Joyce. No.
So again, I don't wanna create extra work for Lori either, and I understand that the five ninety-four, five twelve will be the amount set for the article in the town warning. But in the past, when we've looked at possibly closing the school, Lori did present a different budget, what it would look like for closing the school. So and because if it's gonna be an article along with multiple articles, you know, I'm wondering the taxpayers really do need to know whether or not the budget amount of five ninety-four or five twelve goes up, goes down. If the school is closed and becomes non-operational, if um it's students are tuitioned to other districts, if they regroup into another supervisory union. So I think those are specific enough scenarios that might require at least, at least in some cases, a different budget. Again, I don't wanna create extra work for Lori and I get it, we're down to the wire and why all these things are being brought up now, I really don't understand. I think there was time to discuss some of this stuff. Um, the petition last July could have been accepted then. You said there were reasons for not accepting it. I get that. But now all of a sudden, you, you're willing to accept it and it seems like, um, and people have to vote literally blindfolded because I don't wanna put Lori, you know, staying up till two A M developing budget scenarios for these different options. And if the voters don't have that information, how can they make a, a, an informed decision?
That is a good point. Um, and I think that this is very multifaceted in as far as how uh things are moving forward and that um, potentially when conducting the like needs um assessment in figuring all of that out, there could be additional informational meetings um deciding what steps to take forward. But I believe, like, my understanding and, and I I, I just think that the, the board is pretty solid in wanting to try to figure out how we can make the school happen. Um, however, that is depending on information that we need to really research. And if it does become a non-operational option, what does that look like? What supervisor reunion would that be with? Like, there's things that that number would definitely change. So what the board is looking at right now, Joyce, is this is the number for the budget that we are going to be asking from the taxpayers to run an operational school. That's what, that's what we're gonna have to be uh presenting and, and at town meeting and getting the voters to decide on how they feel and what they choose. Um, so right now, we just gotta get through the articles. Uh, we still have the budget. Um, I, I'm, I really appreciative of Lori doing the work. But as far as presenting non-operational budget, um, all the different numbers, I, I don't know if that's really necessary, especially with how fluid everything is already set to change. Um, but we do have articles that are going to allow, um, you know, the electorate's voice to be heard. So the, those are going to be major stepping stones in the direction that the board is able to take forward. Um, so I'm not sure if that really answers your question fully, but it's my best ability to explain, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're looking to go forward and try to plan in prefer, in preparation for hiring staff and having a school. Does that, what does that look like to the, the other, you know, the taxpayers in the town of Wyndham? Are all of these things considerations that we need to be looking at? And that's information I think the board really wants to hear. So uh, with that, um, does that answer your question, Joyce?
Unfortunately, it doesn't because just like you said, you're asking the electorate to vote on an operational school at five ninety-four, five twelve. You're not giving them the information on all of the other options. So you can't ask them to vote on one thing, telling them, okay, you're looking at, you know, let's say a sweater. This one's cashmere. This one's a hundred and fifty. This one is synthetic. This one's twenty-five. This one is I mean, you need to, you need to provide more information. If you're gonna provide four different options, you need to provide more information, maybe.
We are proposing as a board, we are proposing an operational budget. We are hearing the articles and that is the, is information there alone in the vote of the decision. If the budget does not pass, the budget does not pass. Um, we are, we are going to be confident in the budget that we are presenting and hope our numbers don't change and that with the things that we can't prepare for, we are confident with this amount of money, we can provide excellence. And that is what we're striving for and making things grow. So, um, now, who knows how town meeting could turn out? There may be articles that are entertained. This budget may not pass. This board still needs to be fluid to be able to work forward in how we are going to operate or not operate and what is best for the community. We are entertaining these articles, right, and, and asking and talking about them now. That is why when we get to it, once we can get through the budget piece, um, to ensure that we have everything that we need to present at town meeting. Okay? Um, uh, thank you, Joyce. Barbara Jean Quinn.
Okay, I have a question. We have this budget. Does that include, cause I didn't look at each line item, all of the children that want to tuition out? What, where does that money come from?
Abby, you, uh, you want me to add, answer that?
Yes, please, Lori.
Okay, so no, this is not, this does not include any tuition, tuitioning out. This is an operational budget. And the operational budget is what the board is going to put forth, as Abby said. And then the choice is the, the vote. So.
So if, if the, if the town approves for children to be tuitioned out, if I'm understanding this correctly, that would be an additional expense on top of this more than a half a million dollar budget.
It would depend on what the um structure of the school would be. If it was, became non-operational at that point, then it would probably be less money. And as Michael said, there would be a surplus. If it was a operational and a tuition, um, then it could be an increase. But that would be, that the board would have to make those decisions after the town.
So we could be looking at more than, we could have an operation, a fully operational school and be tuitioning children out on top of that. That is a scenario that could happen.
Right, but you'd only get the money that this budget um from, from the ed fund, what I showed you on the um ed spending. So it would become a deficit at that point for the next year. If that were, if that were the scenario.
Okay, so what, so what's gonna be presented to the town is fully operational budget or closing the school and tuitioning the children? Is that, like Joyce was saying, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I hear what she's saying. There's different scenarios, but we're only presenting one? At, at like, as in the form of a town budget, uh, I'm sorry, school budget? Is that the only thing that's gonna be presented?
That is typically, only one budget is presented at town meeting day, and then it's up to the voters to vote. The board puts forth a budget.
Okay, so Barbara, so, so thank you uh for pointing that out. We need to move forward. Um, the, the town at town meeting is going to really drive a lot more, um, uh, a lot more of the direction of how things are going to go. And that's gonna depend on how people vote. So we are, we are really being as transparent and as flexible, I think, with not only the budget, but also with the articles that are being warned um, to allow a lot of different voices to be heard in the manner of a vote. So, uh, thank you very much. And um, so uh, Lo- Lori, do we need a motion to approve the number and um move forward to the articles?
Yes, you need a motion to um approve the five hundred and ninety-four, five twelve budget.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Lori. Um, now moving on, uh, new business, the articles, um. I know that we have uh discussed this uh before, Bob, and we had mentioned going through and uh possibly doing them all at once. Where do, how are you feeling about with what we discussed out of executive session? And where we are at with the other articles and what are your thoughts?
Well, it sounds like you've already moved on two of them. So you have some remaining ones that you need to consider for adoption. Um, and also start at the top. So you, I mean, the standard operating procedure, you need to elect a moderator for the, for the year. Um, you have um the treasurer position open. It's a one-year term. You have uh one of the seats, um, board, one of the board seats is of, is coming vacant. Um, and so that's a three-year term. Um, you have a West River, uh, school district director, um, the Wyndham rep for the West River for secondary. Is a remainder of a three-year term. So you're going to fill that as well. You have, you have to identify the compensation amount for school directors. The amount that's listed here is last year's amount and is the amount that's actually the budget is built with. So if you're going to change that, then the budget obviously wouldn't have to, I'm not sure what would happen, but you, that's the number that you have currently. You are, and then you have to adopt the article about the budget. You've already adopted the budget, but you have to move the article. And then the next one is about whether or not, uh, if you have any operational surplus, having the voters authorized to move that to a capital reserve fund. And then the last one, uh, this question was brought up early about transacting any other business that may legally come before me. I don't know what that would be and I was served on a board for eight years. We always had that. Nobody ever brought anything up, but I think it might be a requirement. I'm not sure. But it was on your warning last year. Well, I just duct taped it to the end. It was on yours last year. So, um, but I've also run these by, um, Sean Toohey, the attorney, uh, through Visbit and, um, he found the wording of these to be, uh, sufficient. So, um, that's what you have. So you can either, you can either motion the remaining of them that you haven't already as one motion. Uh, or you could do them individually if you want to make changes or discussions.
Okay, so, uh, prior to the motion, I think I'm about to make, I'm, I see two hands raised. I will take those, uh, two questions and then I will be putting a motion on the floor. So, um, one, I'm not sure if it's, uh, Russ or Joyce, one of the, one of the coming members.
Thanks Abby, it was me. I've had my hand raised since we were talking about the budget and the idea that it is a problem basically to present voters, just like Barbara Jean pointed out. My assumption was if the article question about petitioning students out were to be approved, my assumption was that would come out of the five hundred ninety-four thousand dollar budget. And it's only now becoming apparent that would, that would be in addition to the five ninety-four. And then there's talk about the non-operational school. And there is no information regarding a budget amount for that. So how can you expect voters to vote on these questions? Not knowing what the bottom line is, how it's going to impact them personally. This is just, I, I don't understand why all of these things are being put before the voters all at once. Up until now, it's been my, the highway, here's the budget, take it or leave it. Now you're willing to look at things that had been ignored for over a year. There was different budgets presented at that time that were ignored. The question was ignored, the petition was ignored, and now all of a sudden you want to bring it to the voters without even a budget associated with the question.
Well, that is, um, I, I hear what you are saying. We do not present multiple budgets at town meeting. We present a budget. We are presenting an operational budget. And that is something that we are putting a lot of effort and, uh, in, in time and energy into, uh, as a board. So that is what is being presented. I hear what you're saying. We're going to move to Michael Pelton and then, uh, we are moving on.
Abby, if you could hear me for just one, one question further. I believe at one point Lori Garland did say she would present a non-operational budget if the board requested it. So if the board had been thinking about taking up the petition to close the school, you could have requested Lori to, develop a budget on a non-operational school. She would have done it, uh, a month ago. And the amount last year for non-operational school, I believe was four hundred and fifty thousand.
A lot of voices and it's too much.
Okay, so I hear what you're saying. Uh, it has been stated, the board is presenting an operational budget. We hire, we are working very diligently on all that that entails. So at town meeting, we will address this further, but what has just been motioned was to approve the budget. That's passed. We're getting into the articles. Michael Pelton, I want to hear your question. We are moving on and then, uh, that, that's what, that's it. So go ahead, Michael.
I just wanted to pontificate about the last article regarding conduct any other business, uh, for the board. That's sort of something that has been, uh, well, it's been around since the beginning of time effectively. Uh, it's been, if you look at the first book of the town and all the town meetings, that's sort of been there since the beginning. So people could bring their concerns to the boards. And talk about issues that come to the town. So it's important that we include that, um, although there's no specific article associated or any other information included. It's just a, a provision to ensure that the electorate can bring their concerns to the boards and have a conversation with the electorate.
Thank you. Uh, I have to say that the shortest pontification I have ever seen or heard from you, Michael. So thank you.
Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we're, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can I please say something?
Please do.
Bob, I saw you shaking your head when Joyce was bringing up a concern about the budget and tuitioning students. Can you please just explain? What, I know what you were shaking your head at so that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted.
And that's really important. I think it'll answer at least part of Joyce's question and probably, you know, other people's questions important.
Yeah, so you have, so you have to have a budget on there, right? And we, I think you've labor that point that there is an operational budget that's being put for and that's, and that's what it is. The, the article about twisting students is, is in essence, the closing school article that people are referencing. If that passed, then the next direction is, well, what happens with the budget? If the budget then also passed, then you would end up with a surplus presumably because it's going to be less expensive. I think is what we're hearing. If the budget didn't pass, then Lori could present a non-operational budget at that point because now you know that the other article did pass, right? So that would direct guide her to, to bring forth a non-operational, um, at that time. If the article to tuition doesn't pass and the budget passes, well, then you have an operational budget and you're operating. If both go down, then you have to figure out how you're going to come back with a budget to operate because the vote would have been to not operate. Would have gone down. So, and the, the SU thing is a completely unrelated animal that we shouldn't get entangled with all of this because really what you're trying to figure out is what is, what happens on July one? And you have an article that you've approved to ask the voters what they think about what you should do. And you have a budget that just in case you're operational, you have an operational budget. So it really doesn't, we might be making too much of that. I, I just think it's one of those things. You put them both up and you see what happens. And if they, you know, if you're in a situation where the twisting passes and the budget doesn't, then you have to bring back a new budget anyways. And if you, and if the budget was passed, then you're going to have a surplus which you can return in the following year to the taxpayers. So I, I guess I would like, I just, yes, there's a lot of.
Where it's supposed to be, we're expected to be, we're not in a terrible spot. Things will either get revisited or it will work out as intended, is what I'm understanding. Is that?
That's, yeah, that's kind of, and I wasn't kicking my head at her. I was, that was kind of like, no, it's really.
I know why you were shaking your head and, or nodding in response. But, um, I just, I felt that it would probably help to answer questions for, you know, Joyce's questions and other people's questions. And appreciate your, your clarification on that, Bob.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Bob. Well articulated. Now with the remaining articles, if we, can we do a bulk movement to approve, uh, I don't know if I said that right. Can we move to mo, to move the articles in bulk?
The remaining, remaining articles?
I think you would move, you would move the slate of articles minus the two that you've already approved is basically what you'd be doing.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I don't think I see any hands up. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 All right. So here's my question. I'm going to have this typed up nice and neat tomorrow. I'm going to run the two modified versions of the articles that you guys changed the voting on. Well, one of them is not changed. One of them is the same as the petition. The other one is slightly modified. I'm going to run that by the chair first thing in the morning. So I'll be looking for an email first thing in the morning. And then once I hear that she has, that that is consistent with what she believes was done, then I will forward it to, um, the email group that is the listeners group that I've been getting some emails from. Is that, uh, there's, are people on the call that can confirm that? That's what it's supposed to do? Well, actually, you know what? I need a signed copy of this, right? I need a sign, I need the board members to sign this as well, right?
Yes, you do. Yeah.
So, um, it sounds like, are you all three in Wyndham tomorrow during the day?
Yes, I am.
Yes, yes, I will be.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So maybe what I'll do is email you guys.
Excuse me, can I interject for one moment? I'm sorry. I believe, I believe you meant to say auditors, not listeners.
I'm sorry. Yeah, whoever, whoever sent the email to me, I'm sorry. It's the auditors. You're correct. Who are doing the book, right? Um, the town report. So maybe in the first thing in the morning, again, the three of you look for an email from me and I'll try to find a time that is reasonable to get up there with the copy, meet at the school or at the town clerks. You guys can sign it and then we'll hand it over and we'll be, we'll be in good shape and, um, hopefully that works for the folks at the town office.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Bob, for that. That's, uh, that's awesome. So, uh, Daniel, would you like to do the honors tonight?
I motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, adjourning at six forty-three.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Stay healthy and well.